We will conduct our legislative caucus prior to beginning our legislative session. I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Parker will lead the roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Rodriguez, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Davis. We have two presentations this evening for communications. The first presentation will be delivered by Gloria Merrick, Executive Director of the Latino Hispanic American Community Center regarding the 15th Annual Hispanic Heritage Festival. And the second presentation will be the mid-year financial report that will be conducted by our Finance Director, Robert Kinnick. We will then move to courtesy of the floor, followed by approval of minutes. This is the approval of the minutes for the legislative session that occurred on August 26, 2025. Then we will move to reports of committees. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the Work Session of September 2, 2025. The next report will be delivered by Vice President Green, our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, on the Work Session of September 2, 2025. The next report will be delivered by Councilwoman Rawls, our Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee Chair, on the Work Session of September 2, 2025. And the final committee report will be delivered by Councilman Jones, our Public Safety Chair, on the Work Session of September 2, 2025. We do not have any ordinances for first reading. We have an ordinance for amendment, Bill 9 of 2025, and one ordinance for final passage, which is Bill 9 of 2025, which we will vote upon. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution 49 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 50 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 51 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 54 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 58 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 60 of 2025 will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution 61 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution 62 of 2025 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 63 of 2025 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 64 of 2025 will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? No? Okay. Seeing none, any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I just wanted to send out a reminder for the Saturdays, Hot Spot Saturdays.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Thank you, then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:07 PM. I'd like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Hill.
Present. Please note that Councilwoman Daniels is excused this evening. The invocation will be led by Councilman Rodriguez, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to concentrate today on some positivity for our invocation. Let's all celebrate Mr. Michael Parker's retirement, as today will be his final session with us. We just want to thank you, Mr. Parker, for years of dedication and just being a great man, and all of our fishing stories and conversations, because you may not know it, but you got me and my kids excited about spending more bonded time fishing too. So for that, you know, you'll always be in my heart. Thank you, beautiful mother, and your aunts for being here with us this evening. Good to see you, ladies. So I just wanted to see if we could all give Mr. Parker a round of applause for his wonderful service. Thank you for that, and I just wanted to remind everyone, as we gear towards the fall, always look forward to seeing what you can do for your neighbors, for those down the block, because as it gets colder, the need will even raise. So as we gear closer to the fourth quarter, and those leaves turn brownish to orange, and the pumpkin lattes pop up in more retailer stores, the need will be even greater in our demographics. So I just pray for all those during the holiday times and wish you all the best. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, President Hill. Let us all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and thank you, Councilwoman Davis. We will move forward with our meeting agenda. As I mentioned, our first presentation under Communications will be delivered by Ms. Gloria Merrick, Executive Director of the Latino Hispanic American Community Center regarding the 15th Annual Hispanic Heritage Festival.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I apologize, I planned on being there in person, but I have a problem with my knee now, so hoping it gets better by Saturday. I think I'm gonna be going on a bunch of steroids after my meeting here. I think that's what they prescribe. But anyway, so I apologize that I couldn't be there in person as planned. But I'm excited to tell you about the Hispanic Heritage Festival that we have going on this Saturday. We are expecting over 2,000 people again. The festival has really grown. It's been phenomenal. It's been phenomenally received by our vendors, our exhibitors, our sponsors. And again, I'm excited to share that with you. So I have a slide presentation that I believe was sent to Cedric. And Cedric, if you could share that now?
Yes, we have the opening slide, 15th Annual Hispanic Heritage Festival.
Oh, it's already showing on screen?
Yes.
Could you share your screen with me?
I'm sorry?
Could you share your screen with me, Cedric? If I can see what you're seeing?
We're in the process of doing that right now. She's talking. I see her lips moving, but... Okay. We're moving to the first slide.
And this is our program, or I'm sorry, this is our flyer for the day. We have everything that we've done is in Spanish and English, you know, all of our flyers and everything. We have all the bodegas and just put them all around. And I noticed that ABC 27 has been doing some coverage, and Penn Live has been doing a lot of coverage. They do that as an in-kind for us. And I think that helps to get our, you know, our people there, not only from the immediate area, but from the surrounding area. And it's grown so much. We have people come from Philadelphia now, from York, even New York. Like, people will find out that our festival is going on, and they will come visit their relatives that live in Allison Hill. And they say, "Call me when that festival's taking place." So we have people from all over now, even Baltimore. So we're really excited about that. Next slide. So our festival includes a lot of different things. There's a lot of components to the festival. One of the biggest components is the music, the entertainment. As you can see here, we have Los Monsters coming back again. We also have Dancing in the Street. We have this year the renowned Tito Puente Jr., who is coming live. And that's on the next slide, you'll see Tito. And we also, again, we have Los Monstruos. Next slide, that is on the next slide. And that's Tito Puente Jr. Some of you are familiar to him, with him. He's been here to do a couple of sessions, a couple of programs for us over the last 15 years. This is our 15th year. And for those of you that are Hispanic, and Ralph, I guess you would know, that is Arquinsanería. Arquinsanería is a traditionally celebrated 15-year... When a daughter turns 15, and someone turns 15, they have a big party, and it's like a big wedding. Well, that's what we're hoping to have this time of Saturday. A big celebration of our 15th anniversary at the center. Next slide. So we're gonna do that in a festive way with a lot of music. All of our restaurants in our Allison Hill world, they will all be coming out into the street. As you can see, this Ad Carcel is out in the street. And they will be cooking their food, not only inside the restaurants, but bringing it outside. And it's an opportunity to taste all the authentic Hispanic foods that we have to offer in Allison Hill. So we have Ad Carcel, we have La Chapin, we have La Chapin Restaurant, we have Antejos, we have Juan 316 Ministry, and a lot of others. And so it's gonna be, you know, if you come out to the festival, come with a good appetite. Next slide.
I gotta ask, what's on the skewers?
Those are pinchos, and pinchos are really like, you know, chicken shish kebabs. They're like, they're shish kebabs up there on the, on the top right, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah. They're in America, we call them shish kebabs. In Puerto Rico and other places, we call them, we call them pinchos. And so we have someone that's gonna be making pinchos. And so, yeah, it's the same thing. Any other questions? Sí, son deliciosos. And then we have tacos, and we have other people making like some pastries and desserts. And of course, our typical rice and beans, as you can see there. And then she's making populses, populses on the grill outside. Next slide. And here, I can't see the caption at the top, but I'm thinking that this is the kids' activities. We have a lot of kids' activities going on throughout the day. And it's just gonna be, you know, kids come from all the, from SciTech, they come from Harrisburg High, they're coming from DC Tech. And the kids really just enjoy being immersed in their culture for the day in a fun kind of way. So we have, again, a lot of art activities. We have, we always do an art on canvas. All of our games, everything is free except for food. I mean, some vendors do give away food for free. But our restaurants, it's an opportunity for them to make a little bit of money. It's not very expensive food. But, you know, you can get pinchos probably for three or four dollars, and you can get a plate of food for like seven, maybe $10. I don't think you get, you pay much more than that for the food. So over here, you see our students from SciTech. They're helping to run the games. And, yeah, we just have a lot of activities for the kids. And the kids that are all dressed up are from Juan 316 Children's Ministry, and they come every year. There's 12 of them. Of course, they're older now, because you've been there 15 years, so we have, we recycle. We have all these younger generations that come up. And the kids just love to be there, so we'll have them dressed in their clothing. And we also, we won't have Curious George, we'll have WITF, his, um, Tia Florida. Tia Florida is another puppet that is a bilingual. She speaks Spanish, and the kids will enjoy that. Next slide. We also have our domino tournament. I mean, how many of you play dominos? I don't know if you're not played dominoes. Dominoes are easy. You just follow the dots, you know? Somebody puts two dots down, you put two dots down. You put, you know, whatever's on the end, that's, you match that up. It's a very easy game, but, you know, it's a huge traditional game in the Caribbean and in Puerto Rico, and in other parts. And so we will have our, because it is very traditional in Puerto Rico, in our Puerto Rico pavilion, we will be set up with three domino tables. And we have a domino tournament, which a lot of people look forward to, to win the trophies for first, second, third prize, and so forth. And so come out and play dominoes, or learn how to play dominoes. We'll have a table where you can learn how to play dominoes. Next slide. We also have a program at noontime. This year, it'll be starting at 12:15, and you're all welcome to be there. For the program at 12:15, right now, we have Honorable Mayor Williams will be there. We also have Representative Mattson, Representative Hartwick. And I'm not sure who else is going to be there. I always have surprises. Patty Kim can't be there this year, I don't think. So you see a lot of familiar faces there. But our noontime program is very brief. We honor our sponsors. We also give some shout-outs to our elected officials that are in attendance. And we just have, again, a brief program where we give shout-outs most of the time. It's about 15, 20 minutes. Next slide. Oh, and here's our flag parade. So immediately following the, immediately following the program, it's traditional that our children do the flag parade. And that just goes from 15th Street, because the parade goes from 13 to 15. So they start at the very end of the parade, and then they march up to the stage. And we have a lot of music, and there's pictures, and everybody's looking for the flag from their country. We have all 24 Latin Hispanic countries represented by our flags. And it's just a very, I don't know, have any of you ever been to that? To the flag parade? Yeah. Was that a yes? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Councilman Jones affirmed.
Yes, yes. And so you know how lively that gets, and it's just so exciting. And the kids just love to do it, and the whole community, that's kind of like a highlight of the day for them. And I think on the next slide that we have some more pictures of the flag parade. Yeah, so you can see the little kids from Juan 316, and kids from just the community dress up and come out and celebrate their culture, their heritage. And that's kind of like the whole point of this event, really, is we want our kids to be immersed in their culture and to learn about their culture if they don't already, but to understand, you know, their roots and their heritage, traditions, and, you know, the foods. And, you know, maybe it's once a year that the kids get immersed in all this, but, you know, it's really important, because that's how we bring to life our heritage and our culture at this huge event in September each year. Next slide. And these are our sponsors. We have a lot of sponsors. Our main sponsors are PNC, Capital Blue. This year, we picked up Explore Harrisburg, Connecture to Hershey. Hershey Company gives us all the candy. Pepsi gives us all our drinks. And all these companies that are sponsors will actually be there at the event. I'm trying to push my slide up. And so, any questions about our sponsors, or how we get our sponsors, or anything? No? Okay. So that's, basically, you know, I reach out to all of these companies. That's my job, is to reach out to all of these companies and ask them to sponsor. And people forget that our festival is a fundraiser. And so we will raise about $50,000 through all of these companies that you see listed here. And through, this year, we have the Tourism Commission, the Economic Development Tourism, gave us a little bit of funds this year. And then we are also highly endorsed through the Pennsylvania Council on the Arts in Pennsylvania. We're often called to be judges and so forth on other ethnic heritage applications that come in through PA Council on the Arts. And we are at the last level now. We are next to the last level for PA Council on the Arts. So next year, if we do this again, we will be required to bring in a very famous act. Not that we didn't bring one this year, because Tito Puente is a renowned national performer. But that's also a big help to us. And again, that helps to pay for a lot of the overheads, so that a lot of the sponsorships that we're getting from PNC and Capital can actually help pay for the operations at the center. So a lot of people lose sight of that. They don't realize that this is not just a festival. For us, this is our annual fundraiser, and it's very, very important to us. So we appreciate your support and what you do to support the center. And on that last slide, we welcome you to come to be a part of it and to witness a lot of these things that you see in these pictures, and to see, taste, and hear all about our culture, and see, and look at Allison Hill in a very different light than maybe you're used to looking at Allison Hill. And like I said, Allison Hill is very near and dear to my heart. And I'm there because I want to support Allison Hill, and I hope you will too. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. We hope that you heal soon from your injury.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, well, get some rest. Thank you. Our next communications and presentation this evening will be delivered by the Finance Department, the Mid-Year Financial Report.
Hi, my name is Bob Kinnick. I'm the Finance Director.
Do you mind using a different microphone? I'm sorry, we're experiencing some difficulties with Channel 20 right now. So I just want to make sure that everyone can at least hear on YouTube. Thank you.
It's karaoke night. My members of council, my name is Bob Kinnick. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Harrisburg. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to present some of the highlights of our mid-year financial report. And because of the state, my voice is in. I'm gonna let some of my team members do most of the talking. But again, thank you guys for having us.
Hello, I'm Alexander Berstein.
Hello, I'm Alexander Berstein, the Assistant, uh, to the Finance Director.
Timothy Brooks, the Budget Manager.
Brian, Brian McCutcheon, uh, Accounting Manager.
Well, welcome, council. Thank you for being with us today and thank you for being honest to be with you. Uh, before you is the twenty twenty-five mid-year fiscal home report. And going on to pages three where we see table one, uh, we'll get right on into it. So here on table one, um, as you can see, and let me kind of reiterate, this is the media report. This is only reporting from January first through June thirtieth of, uh, uh, this year. Um, through June thirtieth, um, our revenues sit at thirty-nine million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, representing forty-two percent of our budget. While our expenses sit at thirty-five million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand and six, and sixty-two cent, or sixty-two dollars, representing just thirty-eight percent of the budget. Um, that change in cash fund balances around that three point seven, three point seven million, um, resulting in a ending cash fund balance of twenty-two million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars at the end of, uh, June thirtieth to twenty twenty-five. Uh, a lot of the change in what we have here in the media report is, i- it compares from last year this time to this year this time. Uh, and the change that we see in terms of the, the large dollar amounts for both expenditures and revenues is all wrapped around the ARPA money that we received, that twenty-six point eight, I believe. Um, and we have that, uh, mentioned in our footnotes down in, um, one, two and three, just below this table here. If you move along right into the next report, which is, uh, the next table, which is table number two, it just goes into the details of the revenue. So, um, each detailed revenue that we have in terms of real estate taxes and where it stands, in terms of percent of budget, um, I'm looking at just the high, the, the ones that, that stand out as being extremely high and, and coming in, um, pretty aggressive over the first six months, uh, which is the real estate tax coming in at about eighty-five percent. Uh, the real estate tra- uh, real estate transfer tax, uh, also at the hundred and thirteen percent. And the hotel tax, uh, which also is around that hundred percent. Everything else is, uh, coming in at its normal pace. Um, those are largely just because we were able to collect a, a little bit more, uh, on those tax revenues sooner. Uh, moving all the way down through the rest of the detail on the revenue, um, the only one that I also wanted to mention because it, it has to do with that ARPA money, that twenty-six point eight million, which is the interfund transfer that, um, if we go down and see it's at three percent, where last year it was way higher and because of that twenty-six million, um, transferring from, um, the state grants or from the, the, the fund where it is to, to the areas and was, it needed to be appropriated. Um, resulting in the, um, the already mentioned revenue amount of thirty-nine million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, representing that forty-two percent. Moving down to table three, which is our expenditures, uh, for twenty twenty-five up to, um, and it's doing the same thing, comparing from twenty-four this time to twenty-five this time. Um, everything except for, I guess, the debt service looks normal. Uh, the debt service we just obligated and we took our debt services through the first six months. Um, that's what that represents there with that a hundred and eleven percent there. Um, supply services, medical, everything else seems to be tracking or, um, on, on anticipated for what we budgeted. Uh, again, that total results to what we already mentioned, a thirty-seven million. Well, I, I've mentioned a different number in the rev- revenue and expenditures earlier, but I'll explain here just a second. Um, resulting in a thirty-seven million, three hundred and forty thou- three hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, um, in terms of all expenditures. Now, this number is differed from the table one, um, number because of debt service being in this, um, in this table here. Debt service is in a different fund. When you add that debt service along with the capital expenditures that you see, netting at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, um, that brings us to, those two together are one point seven nine million. Um, but when you back off that one point seven nine million, it takes us back down to the three, thirty-five million, um, figure on table one, thirty-five, five hundred and fifty-one thousand. Moving right along to our Neighborhood Services. Um, our revenues at, at this, at the six-month period or, or at the midway period is currently nine million, just over the nine million mark, representing, uh, forty, forty percent of their budget. While their expenditures are just over the nine point one million figure and representing forty-one percent of the budget. Uh, the remaining other funds, uh, Capital Projects Fund, Debt Services, State Liquid Fuels, Host Movement, Harrisburg Senators, Neighborhood Litigation, Special Projects, we have listed on the pages ensuing after. Um, and we won't go into detail of all of those. Uh, that information is there for you to see the status at six months, at the six-month period for those. Uh, moving right on to the back of that, we go right into, uh, twenty twenty-five Revenue and Expenditures Forecast. We would like to see where we're gonna land at or project where we're, we're gonna land at. So, in twenty twenty-five, actually, I'll turn it over to Mr. McCutcheon, or did you want me to finish this part? You wanna?
Oh, no, that's fine. Yeah, thank you, Tim. Um, yes, good evening, council members. Uh, again, these last two pages, forecasts in nature. Uh, the one that's up on the screen right now represents revenue, and this is the general fund. And, um, the categories are listed there and of course, going out that far to twenty twenty-nine, that's, um, kind of a sizable undertaking, but it's, it's based, there is a methodology there. So this page has the revenues, the total is at the bottom, of course. Uh, there is some use of fund balance, which is not really revenue, it's, it, but it's defined as a, as a source when it comes to building the budget. So those totals are reflected there. Uh, the following page includes the other side of it, the expenses, and it's broken down by the, the city's major budget, major object categories, including some breakouts for, as Tim mentioned, debt service and capital expenditures and the total at the bottom. Just to tie in here, the, the city recently submitted at, at the very end of August to the, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the ICA, is required, uh, the, the development of the city's five-year financial plan. And these projection, these projections are, projections are included in that document, uh, as to how the city goes about forecasting uh, for future years and also current year twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
And I will conclude the mid-year report.
Thank you. I'll defer to Vice President Green. I don't know if you have any questions or comments regarding the mid-year report.
Um, thank you, President Hill, and thank you all for being here tonight. I don't really have any questions. If we could just go over the Senator's Fund, um, that's in there just because it shows such a large deficit, um, obviously we could know why, but just so that the, the residents can have an insight into that.
Absolutely. Through the six-month period at the Harrisburg Senators Fund, uh, looks as if we are in terms of revenue at three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, representing just two percent of the budget, while expenses are at five point four million, fo- five point four million, representing thirty-two percent of the budget. Uh, and I'll defer to Brian. I know largely it's, just has to do with the FNB field, but Brian would be the better person to speak on it.
All right. You're giving me the challenging one. All right. Okay, uh, Harrisburg Senators Fund, a- as we know, uh, the ongoing FNB Field Stadium Upgrade Project. So what's not reflected here on this page is that really this is a multi-year, uh, project that, that essentially began, uh, the, the funding of it began in twenty twenty-three from the general fund. So there is a huge buildup of, uh, there's a significant cash balance at the beginning of this year, which obs- um, the, the deficit that shows up there, uh, Vice President Green, is being absorbed by that beginning cash fund balance of the fund. And it's being funded by, uh, the, the general fund over, over tw- starting in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the, the original in, vision of this project was twelve million dollars, which relates to the general fund with half of that and then the other half pertains to a, um, active impending, uh, RACP uh, award that we're anticipating before the end of this year. So that's, I, I know this schedule is, is limited as far as what, what you're seeing, but it's not a deficit in terms of, like, there's no money in, in the fund. It's, it's been previously funded and, uh, has also been funded this year, uh, leading up to the, uh, soon-to-be conclusion of that construction project.
Thank you very much. I don't have any, uh, other questions or comments at this time.
Could, um, could I just follow up on, on, just to give you an update, if, if I may? Uh, on, again, the, the mid-year, of course, as we know, runs through June thirtieth. And, um, with, with timing and, and schedules and everything, here we are now in September, uh, and actually we've uh, reconciled through the end of August. So I thought I'd just take a couple minutes to go over both the general fund and the Neighborhood Services Fund to give you a, uh, an idea where we are currently at the end of August. So for the general fund, um, through August, and we're, we're, of course, eight months, we're talking two-thirds, so that's a meaningful percentage. Um, total revenue for the, the general fund is forty-eight point two million versus expenses of forty-nine point eight. So there's a, a deficit there of about one point six million. And this is a segue. The, the, the timing of the Senator's Fund funding, we, the city moved one point nine five million recently to the Senator's Fund. That transfer in the prior year did not happen until November of last year. So there's, there's a, a reason why there's a timing delay on there, on, on, on the funding. On, on the revenue side of the funds, I, I mentioned the two-thirds. A lot of our revenue, our big-ticket revenue items are coming in um, re- reasonably when, when compared to that. Our real estate tax revenue, uh, we're forecasting, we're, we're pretty much on the mark for between, um, sixteen point or sixteen million and sixteen point seven million for the year, where I think we're, we're, we're on a good pace. Uh, our earned income tax, local services tax, mercantile tax, which includes the parking tax, they're very encouraging percentage right now of already achieved revenue. They can, they range, uh, uh, between sixty-eight and seventy-four percent already. So those are good percentages. Also, the city's, there are, there's departmental revenues that are hovering around those, those rates as well. And, uh, the, the city's interest income is right around sixty-eight point, uh, three percent already achieved. So there's, there, I'm, I'm saying that just to indicate that our budgeting for the current year was, uh, very favorable on, on those particular lines. As far as the, the, the city's cash position goes, when we look at where the city was uh, at August of last year, we were right at twenty million dollars. Currently, at the end of August of this year, we are at sixteen point nine. Now, that's a drop of three point one. But there's three big pieces that make up that decrease. I, I mentioned the, uh, the FNB Field transfer of one point nine five million. It ha- it's happening earlier this year compared to last year. Uh, also Broad Street Market through the end of August comparatives. We, we've, the city has expended about five hundred thousand dollars more compared to prior year. And then also the city has experienced settlement of legal lame litigation, uh, liabilities at an increase of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So those three pieces make up the drawdown as far as why cash has dropped August last year compared to August of this year. That's the general fund. Uh, Neighborhood Services, uh, revenue, total revenue is a little over fourteen million so far for current year. And our expenses are fourteen point eight. So that's a deficit of about eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, the biggest out, um, reason for that is, uh, the settlement finally of the Brenner Motors eminent domain litigation matter. That was one point, over one point nine million. So if you think about it, that fund experienced a, an extraordinary, uh, expenditure of one point nine, but we're only down a little over eight hundred thousand. So that's, that's somewhat encouraging when you, when you compare the two. And of course, that fund, as you know, every month is, uh, experiencing revenue when, when it comes to, uh, the collection of trash, uh, refuse and disposal, uh, charges. The cash position of this fund, um, again, uh, this time last year was right around five point two million and it's down right now to around four point five. And that's, that's overall, that includes the three borough municipalities that the city provides, uh, trash services. So again, that's a drop-off in cash, a- around about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you, but when you weigh that against the, the settlement, the, the Brenner Motors of one point nine, it's, it, it takes, it kind of takes the sting out of that drop-off in cash. That's all I have on, on those two funds. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I don't want to miss anyone. Councilman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, President Hill. How are you guys? Everyone okay? Everybody cool? Wait till I get done. No, I'm messing with you. Um, I do have a question though, just for the general public, um, regarding our budget. I, I see a lot of projections and some of the lines stayed the same, like the sixteen-five, sixteen-five, sixteen-five. Once this ARPA money is gone, what will our budget look like? Anybody?
Well, I'll, I, I can comment unless, but respectfully, uh, Bob, are you okay if I comment? I think I knew he was gonna say that. So.
I mean, let me not call it ARPA funding because I know a lot of people. Originally it started out as ARPA funding, then it turned into revenue replacement. I want to make that clear so everybody doesn't think that ARPA money is ARPA money. You get it.
So really, uh, in, within last year's budget, um, the general fund transferred money over to the, one of the cities, it's the state grants fund, um, to track and accommodate the various activities, initiatives, programs, um, affordable housing, uh, delinquent trash plan, um, the demolition needs and so on. So really, I, that really, for the general fund, it's done its part. It was sourced in large by our federal grants fund when the money was received. Uh, a significant piece of it was revenue replacement. And we're required, and we, we've been, uh, and we have been doing quarterly reporting at the, the federal, um, portal website. And there's a report that shows, you know, we're calling it revenue replacement, but it, it breaks up how it was applied. Uh, a lot of it has to do with, um, public safety, uh, personnel costs. So it was applied that way. And then the, the city develops its budget, uh, last year, of course. And there was an appropriation made to transfer what, um, what I just said about moving a significant amount over to the, the state grants fund. So that is where we are right now as far as the extent of utilizing the general fund, uh, for that, for that purpose. So the money has been transferred over to the grants fund and, and it's been, it's been start, it, not starting, but it has been used and, but there are still, uh, it's, it's still an in-progress or in-process, uh, work, work in progress of, of funding the various initiatives that are.
Right. That's, that's what, that's where I'm asking because there's a significant amount of money being proposed to go out the door right now. Rather than the eight million with the housing project, uh, the two million with the trash, all of the things you aforementioned. Um, so I'm just trying to get, be- because when you look at your, uh, budget as it is today and the projections that you just proposed to us, uh, I'm saying I didn't see too many changes in that. Once this money goes out the window, I'm trying to say, do we have, do we, do we have a an estimate of where we're gonna be far as budget-wise?
Uh, well, the, the, again, I mentioned, these projections are part of the ICA five-year plan. And just please bear in mind, that's not a formalized budget, it's a plan. But it, it, it serves as, uh, guidance for, for developing budgets. And, and the key there is to be mindful of the city's normal recurring revenue sources. You know, I mentioned a few. You know, I mentioned a few earlier about where we are. So at this point, of course, the budget is being thought out, it's being developed. And I, to me, it's being, this really falls more on the, you know, the budget side of the house, but I'm thinking you start with revenue and then you just see what you can do, you know, what your means are to accommodate what the potential expenditures might be. Again, there may be an initiative out there that's similar to the ones that are in play right now that can be considered, but at the same time, that, I wouldn't call it, oh, another ARPA program. It would be the general fund...
That's the point I'm making.
Budgeting for such an additional program, if that is even being considered or, you know, as a potential item.
So like, coupled with the ICA, they're planning, I think they're planning out, what, five years of what we can do moving forward. I'm saying far as, again, once this money goes out, how are we going, are we bringing, I mean, maybe this may be for a later date, I just wanted to, you know, give the public because I had some questions asked and proposed to me as well about this, but I know that that number would change over time far as our budget. I think last year we passed it, what, it was eighty-nine and then with the extra twenty or whatnot, it was like one oh nine or something like that? And I know we won't see that again, and that's what I was trying to get out, to make sure that you can share that with the public to make, because again, they see a lot of this money moving or being proposed to be moved out of the city, and they want to know where this money is coming from. So, go ahead.
The one oh nine represents the general fund and all the other funds, including the state grants fund, which houses the ARPA funds or the revenue replacement. Essentially, it's two different things essentially. It's not, but it is. That would probably be the best way to say. So when the ARPA funds is no longer, we still have our general fund, and we're still generating sixty-eight million, we're still going to spend around seventy or sixty-eight million to keep it balanced. That helps.
Okay. So again, when we get down closer to, we're getting around the budgets, I guess we'll go a little deeper, but that's good. But I understand that where, again, you just have our regular budget without that, those funds that were giving to us at a certain time, I know it just, I'm talking about the city's budget, where we normally operate off around eighty, seventy-five million, somewhere around there, eighty, eighty-nine, eighty, you know, somewhere around there. I just know those numbers won't look the same, and I just wanted to be able to share some of that information with the general public because they were very inquisitive of where all this money is coming from. So, thank you.
Now, I will ask, will the ARPA, not ARPA, revenue replacement funds, is that represented in the inter-fund transfers line? Because if so, you can see where that does tail off as the years go down. So is that represented there?
I know what you're referring to, and the, yeah, thank you. So you, that, it's not so much really about American Rescue Plan money, that really is reflecting Broad Street Market. And when I say that, where that twelve point three million right there, and that, I think that's the twenty-twenty-five forecast column. We're currently, been going through analyzing and evaluating the project expenses. So that's consistent with what was put into the five-year plan, but there's various sources from other funds that would be contributing revenue to the general fund, but that's not ARPA. I'll put it that way, but you're right on the trail of, you can see how it diminishes over the projection years. From, you know, all the way down to, my eyesight's not as good as I'd like it to be, too. Yeah. So, but twenty-twenty-five is really the heavier anticipation. Now, that's not all Broad Street, I'm being remiss, that includes six million of the R cap for the stadium. And the way that works is the money is, the senators' fund is containing all the activity. When the R cap realizes, it goes into the senators' fund, but then it's to be transferred over to the general fund, to reimburse the general fund, because the general fund has funded that project. So six million dollars comes right off the top. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to convey that that twelve million is all about Broad Street Market. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, thank you for your presentation. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay. Please.
Hi, I'm Brian Furtmeyer. I own Cafe Fresco in Level Two on, at two fifteen North Second Street. This is Lori, I'll let her speak as well.
Lori Butina, Brick House, two twenty-nine North Second.
So I'm sure everyone's aware of the meetings and press conferences in regards to the curfews downtown. We wanted to kind of address that because we've been told as business owners that the curfew, there's, I know there was a gray area or some confusion there. We'd like to clarify, if we could, with you what they are and then make a request for possible change.
If you wouldn't mind saying after the meeting to discuss further with Councilman Jones, the bill is currently in the Public Safety Committee, so we have time for amendments and review.
Okay. So that's something we discussed after?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
My name is Libby Prophet, twenty-twenty-five Chestnut Street in Harrisburg. There's a couple of things on my mind and I would like to offer those thoughts to you. One is, I'm listening to the budget, and it seems to be a lot of moving things around from one budget, one fund, whether it's coming from the federal government, you know, those line items, or it's coming from the general fund, the citizen, through taxes and stuff. What is the council's position on auditing the financial status of the individuals that you have allocated to trust with all this money that taxpayers are giving to you? Who audits them? And if you don't have anyone, I have a master's degree, so I am fully capable. Aside from that, there is lots of property that I realize in the Harrisburg area that is not being utilized, and there's this hunger for housing. Now, what I'm going to do as a citizen and as a veteran, because we have no choice, is ask you guys if there's a list that you can give me that I can work with to make these properties what you want it to be. As, yeah, you sending money to the senators, that's all fine and dandy. I don't play baseball. So as a taxpaying citizen, I have a problem with that, and I have a problem with other things. I think as taxpayers, we want to fund things that are interested to us, not interested to our policymakers, you know? So, again, my name is Libby Prophet, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. Two things that's interested in me, that I'm interested in right now is auditing financially because a few years ago, maybe ten fifteen, asked somebody or the next because Harrisburg was in bankruptcy and there was some issue with trash and anyways. And I know where these things come from. Outsider looking in can see, can see the nonsense that you guys are having to vote on. So please, if you have questions, guidance for me, kindly, I'll be here till the end. So housing and our financial situation is my concern.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Thank you. We will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session that occurred on September second, two thousand and twenty-five. On Tuesday, September second, two thousand and twenty-five, the Administration Committee met to discuss one bill and two resolutions. First, Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five is an ordinance for giving and discharging two thousand and twenty-three city real estate taxes, including interest, penalties, and costs, and striking off tax liens for certain historically tax-exempt properties. Deputy City Solicitor Tiersa Cameron was present on behalf of the administration to discuss Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Deputy Solicitor Cameron reminded council members that we've taken action on another bill related to taxes. Dolphin County has a recertification program for nonprofits. Several churches missed the deadline to forgive their two thousand and twenty-three taxes. Other taxing bodies, including the Harrisburg School District and Dolphin County, have taken action on this matter. Council members did not have any questions regarding the bill. Next, Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-five is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to serve as the project sponsor for the Department of, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, or PENDOT, Transportation Alternative Set Aside Grant awarded to the Capital Area Green Belt Association in the amount of one million four hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars for the Paxton Parkway Trail Restoration Phase Three project, and to enter into all required agreements to administer the funds. Mr. Sam Skalkowski, interim business administrator, Joel Siders, a city engineer, and Deb Reihart, project manager, were present on behalf of the administration to discuss Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. Scott Shepler, program manager for CAGA, was also present to share on behalf of CAGA. Mr. Skalkowski provided an overview of the grant, noting that it has already been received in the amount of one million four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, four hundred, thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars, he misspoke there. Mr. Shepler shared that the Parkway Restoration Grant will pave about two-thirds of the Parkway toward the south end. Mr. Skalkowski noted that there was no local match, and Mr. Siders noted that there was no cost to the city. Council members did not have any questions regarding this resolution. Finally, Resolution Fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to petition for and support the appointment of Midtown Asset Consulting LLC as receiver over the residences of Governor Square, to enter into all required agreements with the receiver, and to appropriate and expend city funds as necessary to stabilize, restore, and preserve the properties subject to reimbursement. Deputy Solicitor Tiersa Cameron shared that the Law Bureau was recently in court regarding the court-appointed receiver. Midtown Asset Consulting LLC has been appointed by the Court of Common Pleas for Dolphin County to serve as the receiver. Deputy Solicitor Cameron noted that the city of Harrisburg will be fully reimbursed for any money that is spent. Mr. Justin Hindley is a fifteen-year resident and owner of Midtown Property Management, and he was approached between six to eight months ago to determine his interest in being considered for receivership. Council members had a series of questions for both the Law Bureau and Mr. Hindley. What are your intentions for the property regarding the operating revenue? Who will be collecting the rent? How much money is coming in? Staff capacity as receiver? Will there be reports given to council during the process? Reimbursement estimates? How are residents going to be treated during this process, and do you have any receivership experience? Why wasn't it an open process to consider a receiver? Mr. Hindley shared that the process will be, will occur over a phased plan that will take approximately ten years. Phase one will begin within the first six months and will be an indicator moving forward. Phase two will be a strong implementation plan, and phase three will focus on capital improvements. I encourage my colleagues to support Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five, Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-five, and Resolution Fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. We've already taken action on similar legislation to Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-five will assist in CAGA's Parkway improvements. And finally, Resolution Fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five will work to begin the restoration of Governor Square. This concludes the Administration Committee report. The next committee report you will hear will be delivered by our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, on the work session of September second, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, President Hill. During the work session held on Tuesday, September second, two thousand and twenty-five, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed Resolution Fifty of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Dolphin County Local Share Municipal Grant application of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the renovation of bedroom accommodations and bathroom facilities at Fire Station One located at eighteen-twenty North Sixth Street. There were a few questions regarding if there was a match required by the city. It was confirmed that there is no match requirement for this grant, but if the cost would exceed the amount of the grant, the city would need to make up the shortfall. Councilwoman Rawls did voice some concerns with the cost and potential impact to the budget. Chief Interline did note that the Fire Bureau has been diligent on spreading the required upgrade costs over multiple years to reduce the impact on the city's coffers. I would ask that my colleagues support this resolution to submit the grant applications needed to improve Fire Station One. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. The next report you will hear will be delivered by our Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee Chair, Councilwoman Rawls, on the work session of September second, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, President Hill, and good evening, everybody. The Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee met on Tuesday, September second, two thousand and twenty-five, to discuss Resolution Forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a reimbursement agreement amendment with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to accept an increased award amount of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars in transportation alternatives set aside funding for the purpose of funding the Capital Area Green Belt Paxton Parkway Trail Restoration Project. Representatives present included Deb Reinhardt, Senior Project Manager for Harrisburg Facilities, Facilities Director Dave Baker, and a representative from the Capital Area Green Belt Association. The committee was, the committee was informed that construction bids for the Paxton Parkway Trail Restoration Project came in slightly higher than initially estimated. To address this, PENDOT agreed to increase the award by twenty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred, twenty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars to fully fund the project. Discussion and questions that council had, council members inquired as to why the bids were higher than anticipated. It was anticipated they were higher due to inflation and rising construction costs contributed to the higher-than-expected bids. This resolution ensures that the Paxton Parkway Trail Restoration Project can move forward without financial gaps, maintaining progress on improving Harrisburg's trail system, and supporting recreational opportunities for residents. With that in place, I ask that my fellow council members support Resolution Forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five, and that concludes the business of the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee.
Thank you. Our final committee report this evening... Our final committee report this evening uh, will be shared by our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilwoman Jones, on the work session of September second, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, President Hill. On September second, um, the Public Safety Committee held a work session where we discussed Bill Eight of two thousand and twenty-five and Resolution Fifty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Bill Eight of twenty-five is an ordinance amending Chapter Three dash three-three-three of Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg's Entitled Curfew Providing an Adjustment of Hours of Curfew for Minors and Increasing Penalties for Curfew Violations. Um, present to discuss Bill Eight was Commissioner Carter and Deputy Chief Young. We discussed Bill Eight, and among um, that discussion, many questions were asked in regard to Bill H, I mean, Bill Eight, which ultimately prompted me to place Bill Eight in the committee. Um, some of those questions were, um, how is this going to be administered to youth? How are you going to be able to tell the difference between who's seventeen and eighteen years old? So ultimately, um, it's, we're going to have it in committee right now, and we'll, we'll, we are continuing discussions with Commissioner Carter to work on a solid plan that benefits the city as a whole. On Bill, uh, I mean, Resolution Fifty-one of two thousand and twenty-five, a ru- a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Office of State Fire Commissioners Municipal Fire Department Capital Grant Program and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to execute any agreements, forms, and documents related to the award of eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the purpose of funding the renovation of the bathroom facilities at Fire Station Two located at one forty North Sixteenth Street. Um, present to discuss was Chief Interline. As we discussed Resolution Fifty-one, and council had a clear understanding of this resolution, and there were no questions, and I would ask that my colleagues support Resolution Fifty-one, and that concludes, yeah, they had no questions for yet, and that concludes the work session uh, for public safety.
Thank you. We do not have any ordinances for first reading. We have one ordinance for amendment. That's Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five. An ordinance for giving and discharging twenty-twenty-three city real estate taxes, including interest, penalties, and costs, and striking off tax liens for certain historically tax-exempt properties.
Thank you. We have one ordinance for final passage. That's Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it one more time?
Sure. Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five. An ordinance for giving and discharging twenty-twenty-three city real estate taxes, including interest, penalties, and costs, and striking off tax liens for certain historically tax-exempt properties.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Bill Nine of two thousand and twenty-five passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including the abs- excused absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration is Resolution Forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a reimbursement agreement amendment with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to accept an increased award amount of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars in transportation alternatives set aside funding for the purpose of funding the Capital Area Green Belt dash Paxton Parkway Trail Restoration Project.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution Forty-nine passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including the excused absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Fifty of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Fifty of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the submission of a Dolphin County Local Share Municipal Grant Application of up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars to fund the renovation of the bedroom accommodations and bathroom facilities at Fire Station One located at eighteen-twenty North Sixth Street.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Fifty of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution Fifty of two thousand and twenty-five also passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including the excused absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Fifty-One of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Fifty-One of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioners Municipal Fire Department Capital Grant Program, and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to execute any agreements, forms, and documents related to the award of eighty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the purpose of funding the renovation of bathroom facilities at Fire Station Two located at one forty North Sixteenth Street.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Fifty-One of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Oh, did he? I didn't hear him.
Oh.
Yes.
He said yes.
Okay, okay. Might be my ears. Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution Fifty-One of two thousand and twenty-five passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including the ex- uh, excused absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to serve as the project sponsor for the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, PENDOT, Transportation Alternatives Set Aside TASSA Grant Awarded to the Capital Area Green Belt Association, CAGA, in the amount of one million four hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred dollars for the Paxton Parkway Trail Restoration Phase Three Project, and to enter into all required agreements to administer the funds.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand and twenty-five passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including the uh, the excused absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services agreement with Midtown Asset Consulting LLC as court-appointed receiver over the residences at Governor Square, and to appropriate and expend city funds as necessary to stabilize, restore, and preserve the properties subject to reimbursement.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for further discussion.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, so before us, we have Resolution Fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. Hindley, for joining us again. Um, and Solicitor Grover is present. I believe council members had some questions um, for you, Mr. Grover, so I will begin with Councilman Jones.
Thank you, President Hill. How you doing, sir?
I'm very good, sir. How are you?
Great to see you again. Uh, seriously, the question is, um, you know, uh, as we were in our last session, one of the concerns that I have is, um, I think what was two hundred and fifty thousand that we were putting up first? And if I'm, if, and my question is for you yet. It's, um, maybe you can answer it. So if I'm getting a clear understanding of what you're saying. So you said there was a timeline of six months, okay, that you'll be able to assess the actual, what we, we, what we will need to put in. So at that point, would you come back in front of council before we dish out any further more monies? After you, you get your report and we get to, uh, review that? Is that what, is that what you were saying?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, because my concern was, you know, I wasn't prepared to actually vote on this today unless I got that clarity, because, um, like I said, you, there was, um, the money that was coming in far as, uh, the rent collection, I think it was up, up, upwards of eight hundred thousand, and I think you were only four hu- forty thousand, forty-six thousand per month, and then thirty-six was only collected, but ultimately it equaled it up to like eight hundred. So one of the problems, and this is where you come in, Solicitor Grover, uh, the, the actual owner of, of Governor Square, um, I'm, I'm sure he's been sued and taken to court and all of that, not sued, but taken to court. There was a lot of bills that weren't paid upwards of, over a million dollars. And so I'm worried about the city being reimbursed. That's what, uh, my concern was, and not only my concern, it's from residents as well.
Sure, and, and, and I guess the best way I can articulate this is to compartmentalize what's going on, right? There is still a bankruptcy case for the owner's corporation. That's, they're up in, up to US Bankruptcy Court under Chapter Eleven, which is scheduled then to convert to what's called a Chapter Seven, which is a liquidation. The city, CRW, HRA, and many, many, many others are the creditors of that entity. Um, this is not meant to solve the owner's problems. That is not what this is about. Owner has the owner's problems. Um, it is our anticipation, frankly, that the bankruptcy will be thrown out by the court. We had a motion to that effect pending and about to be heard when we entered into a stipulation to move over to county court to appoint a receiver. It is an extraordinary thing for the city to ask for a receiver. But basically, it became Mayor Williams' determination, what else can we do? These people need help. And that was what was in our power to make that petition. Um, the quarter million dollars, as you know, this council already voted to appropriate. Not another penny can be spent without a further appropriation. That is a penny by the city. The idea is that, that someone needs to get in there and fully assess the situation. Um, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, HRA and Housing Authority went in together with a third party, and were only given access, if I understand correctly, thirty-seven of the units to do their assessment out of two hundred and twenty-two. Um, so no one who's an outside entity has assessed it. Our codes people have been locked out. Our office with codes has attended hearings on nineteen hundred separate violations, um, and we've attended every bankruptcy proceeding there is. Um, so the, the way this comes-
Anything collected?
It can't be collected. It's tied up in bankruptcy. That becomes the question. Um, the, and frankly, we were never trying to collect the money for fines. We were trying to get the money put back into the property for repairs. We use that, that leverage to try and say, listen, instead of giving the government this money, fix your property. Um, and that, we, we were really just banging our heads against the wall, frankly. This is what happens when LLCs get control of things and no one else can, can, can do anything to pierce it. Um, we have not given up on the idea that the owner will be responsible someday, but I'm not going to overpromise that that can happen.
So, my question-
But how does the money come back, right?
That's, there we go.
No, so no, so no, so here, there's two, two potentials, and one of them is the more realistic than the other. First, you assess and stabilize the property. Um, there was more than one hundred vouchers from the Housing Authority that used to go into there. They're down to, I believe, below fifty, and, and, and Mr. Hindley can probably speak to that better than I can right now, since he's seeing data. You don't lose those because of, of, they're not available. You lose them because there's not, it's not fit to live, right? So those, a number of vouchers are still available to the Housing Authority. Idea is to restore this and bring back that guaranteed revenue stream that would come from that. Whether that gets the city's money back, maybe, but doubtful. What will get the money back eventually, because it'll be secured with a court order,
The sale of it.
is the sale. Now, there's an eight hundred, and I want to say point four, point six million dollar mortgage held by Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority with federal money, which also is the leverage to keep this low and moderate income housing. That's part of the deed restriction. Um, so there's a lot of entities to satisfy to transfer this property. So ultimately, the transfer would be where there is a sale to a qualified entity, from HUD's perspective, hopefully additional federal money into it, which will extend the period of low and moderate income housing requirements. And at that transfer, both the mortgage to HRA, and whether that then goes back into the property, we'll see, and the seed money the city puts into it at that transfer. Now, that is a ways down the road. Um, but the, uh, the estimates back in twenty eighteen and nineteen twenty was somewhere, I forget, it was in the high teens of what it would cost then in terms, I mean, teens of millions, like somewhere between seventeen and twenty million dollars to restore it then. Obviously, the cost has gone up. Um, we have never had a doubt that the money was available through existing programs, including tax credit programs and others, to leverage to get the money to repair it. The current owner was unwilling to put themselves in it to do it. Um, when, and before they went to bankruptcy, the mayor's office, when our office and a lot of people sat through a bunch of presentations-
Can you move the microphone closer to you?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, on people that said they could either buy it, restore it, one after the other refused to comply with what HUD required, that is, to-
Ousing the hu- of, of individuals and all of that, yeah.
Showing they're going to put up money to relocate the people that live there, which is what the city's priority was. These people need a place to live that's a healthy, affordable place to live. So that is to keep us in this program, uh, th- this, this method. Is it a guarantee? No, but I think it's a fairly solid approach. Um, I, I think, I, I watched the tape today from last week's hearing, and Mr. Hindley's not incorrect. Because we were coming through the court systems, people don't tend to want to step in to the middle of someone else's legal battle. Can, can we ask them to volunteer and step up?
Hey, that's why I said he had a lot of courage stepping in, right?
So, so I asked a lot of people who laughed in our face. You know, the criteria of those that wouldn't do it were people that were local, people that knew our market, people that knew the people that lived here, people that did business here with, with, here. The ones who volunteered and wanted, basically, as far as we could tell, was to flip it to market-rate housing. They came from Vegas, New Jersey, New York. They, they're calling eager to be either the owner or the receiver, but the bids were five hundred thousand dollars in, in bankruptcy court. We were ignored by the, uh, bankrupt debtor, by the broker they appointed to try and sell the property. Every issue that we raised, the us, HRA, together, and the tenants, came to pass, that these were the realities on the ground. They were trying to get a bankruptcy sale to clear them out, and they didn't care what happened to the people that lived there. So we have hung into this fight for a long time. Again, no guarantees this is perfect. You know, literally, the last fire, there was twenty minutes after the judge had the hearing on receivership, right? Um, it, it, it was insane that that, that was going on that fast. But the, our money comes back most likely from a sale. The best-case scenario is the cash flow becomes positive enough that they start paying that, out of that cash flow.
And thank you for the, um, the lengthy, uh, explanation, because I think our viewers need to hear that as well. I was pretty much up to, uh, to speed with, with that, through having conversations with you. But my concern is just, um, the city getting its money back, and that's the major part for me. So being that you're able to come back, um, and, and, you know, the timeframe that you said, um, before anything else goes out, and I think we can make a, a better assessment from that. So those are the questions I have. I know my colleagues have some other questions, so I'm fine on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Um, the one question I did have, uh, last week, actually, Solicitor Grover just answered. It was more to the, uh, fact of how did we come across the specific receiver that you called? But you just alluded to you calling quite a few people, and they pretty much laughed in the city's face, so that was the answer I was looking for. I just wanted to ensure the process was not only fair, but equitable to anyone that wanted to come to the table, but it's a huge overhauling, so I understand.
To, to those that know him, the first person I asked was Brian Hudson. And, uh, he, he was not taking his retirement down this road. And, uh, he, he was not taking his retirement down this road.
Got you. But to, to that point, um, you actually did attempt to reach out to numerous people or individuals-
We did, a- a- and, and, and we knew we were asking a lot-
Yeah.
-of, of anyone who could do it. Um, and if this gives the council and maybe the public any comfort, um, the, the midtown business that has been built by Mr. Heinley, our office sees properties and landlords that are in trouble. Not a single one of them has ever crossed our office, not a single unit that he has. Other ones are in our office every week, every month, being dragged in with codes. We've not had a single one, which I think goes to something about how the properties are being managed.
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Heinley, I, I do appreciate you doing the best with the information you had last week, ensuring we can get whatever answers we could. So thank you, and thank you for Solicitor Grover. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. Um, thank you, uh, Solicitor Grover, for saying that Mr. Heinley's properties have never come in front of us. That was one of the things I asked, not exact question last week, but just saying, have you had experience? What do you like as a property owner? And I think that's important for the residents to know, um, because there are a lot of slum landlords in the city. Um, the one small question that I just had was with Mr. Heinley's payment. I know we had spoke about phase one. I think it was about twelve thousand a month for phase one. And I was just wondering, is this payment coming out of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we already designated towards the project, or is it coming, be coming out of another budget?
No, no, that is the funding for this payment. And, and if another payment was needed, and I think I was frank about this when we asked for two fifty, eventually-
Yeah.
-there'll probably be requests for more. And the, but, but the design-
Of course.
Yeah. But the design is to-
Probably forty million in the whole, when this is done.
Is to do it, well, most of the money should not come anywhere close to coming from us, right?
I hope not, but yeah.
It's a matter of getting it up and stabilized, but, um, and then there are financial resources that can be put to bear on this thing.
Which Mr. Heinley, he did explain, like, with fundraising, once we get to, I think, phase three. Um, so I, I mean, I know this is important, and I think the residents, w- we need to figure out what, how much is it, what is it gonna look like? There needs to be an assessment, like you said, and I think we have to get something started for these residents. I think they've lived in this muck for too long, and it's just, um, it's disturbing. So I understand why this resolution is front of, in front of us. I think I just wanted clarification on money, like everybody else did, because at the end of the day, it's a huge project, but it's needed for these residents who have to live in what they're living in currently. So that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. They've all kinda been asked and answered.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thanks, President Hill. No, I don't have any questions either. They have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for joining us again. I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Oh, we had multiple. So before us, we have Resolution fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it one more time?
Resolution fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services agreement with Midtown Asset Consulting LLC as court-appointed receiver over the residences at Governor Square, and to appropriate and extend city funds as necessary to stabilize, restore, and preserve the properties subject to reimbursement.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-eight passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including the exclu- um, including the excused absence of Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you.
Thank you for your confidence, Council. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Best of luck to you. Next, we have Resolution sixty of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for three fifteen North Second Street, submitted by Adam Brenneman with Brenneman Properties LLC to con- to convert the existing office building into a ten-unit multifamily dwelling and associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution sixty of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution ratifying a professional services agreement with Wallace Montgomery and Associates, LLP, for the purpose of providing engineering and design services for multimodal improvements along Walnut Street.
Thank you. Resolution sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution sixty-two of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-two of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution approving the fifth proposed twenty twenty-five budget reallocation.
Thank you. Resolution sixty-two of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution approving the sixth proposed twenty twenty-five budget reallocation related to the rebuild of the Broad Street Market Brick Building.
Thank you. Resolution sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution approving the final slash, uh, the preliminary slash final land development plan for five oh eight and five ten North Second Street, submitted by WCI Partners LP to convert the existing office buildings into multifamily dwellings and expanded site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Seeing, hearing none, new business. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to send out a reminder to all that wanted to join City Council this Saturday for our community cleanup, known as Hot Spot Saturdays, as we gear towards, uh, two hundred tons of illegal waste removed throughout the city. You can join us from ten to twelve at the South Side Boys and Girls Club. We will have pickers, um, wagons, gloves, everything needed. So join, uh, the team as we continue our goal to have clean and safe streets throughout the city of Harrisburg. So one more time, we will meet from ten to twelve at the South Side Harrisburg. I believe that's Hanover Street from ten to twelve, so we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a few notes for, uh, new business, so please bear with me for a second. Uh, we are in the midst of the first week of Harrisburg Restaurant Week, um, hosted annually by the Harrisburg Downtown Improvement District. There are sixteen restaurants participating with special curated menus specifically for Restaurant Week. To learn more information about Harrisburg Restaurant Week, please check out their website at www.harrisburgrest- restaurantweek.com. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at five thirty PM, uh, City Council will host a policy work session regarding spending priorities outlined in Bill Five of two thousand and twenty-five, um, which is the former American Rescue Plan Act funds. So please join us or listen in for that. And my final order of new business this evening, we'd like to acknowledge the retirement of our city clerk, Mr. Michael J. Parker. I will ask for the assistance of our research analyst, but while he's making his way, I do have a proclamation I'd like to read, so please bear with me. The City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Office of City Council and Office of City Clerk. Proclamation. Whereas the residents of the City of Harrisburg and the members of Harrisburg City Council are honored to share in the retirement of Mr. Michael J. Parker, City Clerk. And whereas Mr. Parker is a native of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, he received his formal education in the Susquehanna Township School District. He is a member of the class of nineteen seventy-six. During his educational career, he was the only black student who attended Progress Elementary School. Mr. Parker furthered his education at Millersville State College and graduated on December twentieth nineteen eighty with a bachelor's degree in secondary education with an emphasis in foreign language. And whereas Mr. Parker began teaching Spanish at John Harris High School in nineteen eighty-one, the same year he met his wife returning to the city where he resides. His career educating inner-city youth spans seventeen years, including three years teaching in an alternative school setting. Over the course of his career, Mr. Parker worked as a counselor supervisor in a residential setting for juvenile offenders and as a children's bilingual mental health case manager. Mr. Parker has been employed by the City of Harrisburg previously, serving as a community relations specialist and director of community policing. He twice received the Mayor's Award for Distinguished Public Service. And whereas Mr. Parker currently serves as the city clerk for Harrisburg City Council. In this role, he has assisted Harrisburg City Council in translating our meeting agendas and social mediographics into Spanish, allowing Harrisburg City Council to reach our Spanish-speaking neighbors and community members. And whereas Mr. Parker recently celebrated forty years of marriage with the love of his life, Patricia. Together, they have raised four children, one of whom is deceased as a result of gun violence. They also have eight grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. Mr. Parker is very fortunate and blessed to still have both living parents, Ms. Joyce Annette Scott Parker and Mr. James Horace Parker. And whereas Mr. Parker's hobbies include traveling with his lovely wife, fishing, and watching his beloved Indianapolis Colts and Philadelphia Sixers. He is very active in his church, Wesley Union AME Zion Church, where he serves as a class leader, minister, superintendent of Sunday School, and a member of the Sanctuary and Men's Choirs. And now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that on behalf of Harrisburg City Council, I Danielle L. Hill, with great pride and joy, commend Mr. Parker for his dedicated service to the City of Harrisburg and Harrisburg City Council. We wish you more life, more grace, and more favor ahead in your retirement. Signed and attested in the City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Jared Truesdale, City Clerk, Danielle L. Hill, Harrisburg City Council. We do have-
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a, a slideshow we wanted to share, too. Is it working? Oh, no. Okay. So...
While he's trying to get that together, if I could make a few, um, comments. First of all, thanking you, President Hill, for being by my side the whole time. When others doubted me, you stood by my side, and for that, I'm grateful. Thank you, City Council, for your love, your support, um, and your friendship. Um, friendship means a lot to me. And, um, I've always, we've always greeted each other with handshakes, hugs, and, and smiles. Um, to my remaining staff, this office is being left in very capable hands. Um, Jared and Cedric, we knew when we hired them that they were exceptional employees and have lived up to their expectations and more. So rest assured that this office will be, uh, well taken care of, and, and for that, I'm thankful. I wanna thank my family for being here. Family means the world to me. And I thank God that he has enabled us to be together, to love one another, and to support each other, no matter what the situation. I wanna thank my mother especially, regardless of my behaviors, of, of my, um, being a teenager. She has seen me through hard times and was there unconditionally, as my wife has been with me, unconditionally. And I, I, uh, words cannot express the level of gratitude that I have for the women in my life. My, uh, my friends, Larry Moore, my line brother, Alfred Sloan, uh, all of you, thank you for showing your love, for being present here today. My child Chantel, my grandchild, Chantier, and her friend, my great, too, my grandson, Princeton James Dent, he has my middle name. And my, huh, my pretty girl, Zuri Prejor Faith Dent. My mother's two sisters, Cindy, Aunt Cindy, and Aunt Marcia, alias known as Kizzy. Thank you for attending. This means the world to me. I'm about to enter a new phase of my life, and I just thank God for bringing me thus far, and that he continues to stay with me, uh, as I journey further and grow with him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker, I just wanna say, 'cause, uh, I know we had some great conversations since I've been here. You made a statement right in, uh, the foyer out here when I first got here, um, and you told everyone you knew I was gonna do a good job here, right? Um, I appreciate that. But I wanna direct this first part to your family. You know, um, it's not easy being, um, a servant. So I thank you. I know my colleagues thank you for allowing him to be with us, to share him with the world. It's a tough task. It's a sacrifice. If, if, if one hasn't been a servant, they wouldn't know this feeling. It's hard. You know, you have to give up time with family members, loved ones, the children, the wife to serve, and that's what God's purpose was for you. So I wanna thank you guys for allowing him to share, sharing him with us. I wanna thank you guys for that, all right? But I'll say to you, you have, um, a, a, a great journey a- ahead of you. Um, and I know this won't be the last I see of you. I enjoy your mentorship. I enjoy, uh, the conversations that we have, even when, you know, I may be in a state where, and you say the right things to, uh, you know, keep me on the path. Uh, I appreciate that, and I look forward to continuing to have those conversations. So I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you so much.
Oh, there it is. See? Little faith. Our technology has been a little weary in here tonight, but here we go. Okay, it's, okay, manually. Okay. Yeah. I know, I don't have it. We know. Oh, that's nice. Mm-hmm. Uh-huh. Oh. Okay. Okay, we'll end here. Sorry, we're having technical difficulties, but we will play it when we can. Okay, everyone, the time is seven forty seven PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?